All right, we're gonna. Start the meeting this evening. We had two work sessions or three work sessions. This week. Those. At Tyler and Marvel in the center road with pathology lab by road. And we had third league. For work sessions. Get the minutes, we're gonna just review the minutes. Have a motion to approve the minutes, so first. I'll second favor. Good, thank you. Uh, we're gonna start off this evening. With Woodchuck Hill subdivision. This is a preliminary approval. Going through all of it, you want to give like a. Five minute update and then.
Yeah, I can do it. So, um, Mike Fogel, counsel for the applicant, uh, Lanacane Sierra. Scott Freeman, I mean, basically. Since the last meeting, we, uh, we did update the plan, we included the, uh, the note relating to, uh, the quarry and the belt club. Usage note, I think we, uh. Address the board and, uh, public comments with, with that, with that note. Um, so that's on there, there's, there's the usage note and then it's also. Towns request, it's identified on each individual lot that refers anyone reviewing it to. Go to the usage note, so we think that that was why I said a question. Um, the other issue is that we were showing a monument sign on the plan, there was some back and forth on, you know, who would. With responsibility, that would be, um, at the end of the day and talking with. The client, we decided to just remove that. So this plan, I think this is the one that reflects that, well, this one still shows the monument note on there. I did send another updated one.
And I think I sent it to everyone's email, it was very late, it was after the maybe five o'clock.
Right, yeah, the surveyor was in the field, he couldn't make the change until late in the day, but, um. The revised plan, um, removes the monument sign and the monument note and we can obviously deliver that. Morning, I understand that there's another additional note that the board wants us to add to the plan. Um, maybe send that to me this afternoon, I talked to the client, that's no issue. We can, uh, have the surveyor add that to the plan, um, and deliver. Revised plan far more, it was also brought up right before this meeting, there are two notes, you have the note numbers on those.
No, number one has note number five. On the typical subdivision requirements. So note number one says all structures must be located within the quote allowable building area if wanted shown unless approved by the town planning board, so the subdivision map was silent on that. I don't know that that note should actually apply. Same thing with note number five, all interior angles of the allowable building area shall be ninety degrees unless otherwise noted. Note number six is actually referencing a surveyor and it just says, the survey has been provided by surveyor's name, it just needs to be filled in.
Okay, yeah.
And so. That was, I think too, yeah, the way to reach them and know number.
One, six.
One. One and five are removed and six.
Six is filled in with the surveyor's name.
One and five come off, six may have had.
Yeah. I'm not supposed to help you at right angles, but I would get to you back in your side, many people can't even.
That's a fun one, Alan. Okay. Are there any further discussion questions? This one, so this is for preliminary approval, because we need to complete the work, all the roadways, everything inside that, and then you can come back. That's right. So with that, I'll make a motion, I'm going to approve the Woodchuck Hill subdivision for preliminary approval.
Second.
I'll read the subdivision here, the resolution, motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan entitled. Preliminary plan Woodchuck Hill wrote subdivision counted with Anadaga County, New York made by. What you're sequent. Land surveying, P L L C and dated three twenty 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 three and last revised on two eight twenty four. With the following findings and conditions, findings, this is an eight lot residential subdivision in an R one zoning district of the town. Subdivision plan meets all the requirements for preliminary subdivision plan. Without need for any variances, the applicant has particularly responded to the comments. Upboard and this floor with respect to septic requirements for the lots, including showing the reserved area for backup septic system. This board held a public hearing on subdivision on January eleventh, twenty twenty four, all members of the public were given an opportunity to be heard. Or took particular note of concerns adjacent to where Rod and Gun Club. Which wanted to be sure that future lot owners who would be presiding at this property for residential use would be made aware of the existence of the Rod and Gun Club as well as the adjacent quarry. Both of which are long term pre existing uses and which produce noise and other effects. And which are permitted to continue their ongoing uses, the board shares the opinion that these. That the appropriate notice be given to potential purchasers of the lot and a note on the plan and peers in each lot with respect to those uses. Those uses and the part of the final plan filed with the Anadaga County clerk. And will be part of the permanent public record. This project is exempt from Anadaga County Planning Board, G M L referral. This is an unlisted action action under secret. Board has reviewed the E A F dated fourteen twenty two. The applicant is taking a hard look at the environmental impacts of this project, including all questions for. In respect to part two of the E A F. Finds that there is no, there is. There are no small environment, no small environment.
No, or small.
No, or small. In respect to the subject in particular, the applicant has five requirements of county health department respect with septic requirements same. Accordingly, this board grants this project a secret information. It's for, it's what the board here for parish and. Written comments to the applicant on behalf of the planning board is found all satisfactory. Sound all satisfactory address, yeah. This preliminary subject. And this board accepts that fine. Conditions. This approval, the preliminary plan is subject to the following conditions. Within ten days of the date thereof. In ten days to the date thereof, the applicant must present a revised preliminary plan which adds the following notes. Uh, item A, note number one and five are to be removed. And note number six is to be filled in the surveyor's name. Item B is no permanent structures may be built upon the areas on plan and on each loop noted as septic area, future septic expansion without county. Health department approval of an amended sewage disposal. Two, the preliminary plan is amended for the above must be signed by the applicant and the chairperson of the planning board filed. It sounded to live within ten days thereof. Prior to the final plan being presented to the board for approval of all the additional conditions must be met. Securities as may be required by the town engineer, town attorney for. Partner development and operations must be posted and reported to the town clerk. All infrastructure and roads must be completed, road dedication must be completed, approved by the town attorney filed. Written D's, water utilities and stormwater must be completed, approved by the town attorney, planning board engineer and town engineer must be filed. Another directives from the town attorney or town or planning board engineer which may be required to assure compliance. With all subdivision regulations of the town. Four, final plan has been presented to the board for review.
Must be.
Must be. Thank you, must be presented to the board for review for substantial conformity with preliminary plan and approval. Further subdivision regulations of the town, developer applicant may be present no more than two separate. They present no more than two separate phases of the preliminary class of final approval. Okay, so with that, I move second, got pegged on the finger. Unanimous, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm next, we have Vern Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just gotta get my eye on something.
Oh.
They kind of show where it goes.
Yeah, oh, up there. I'm gonna have to take it out. All right, help. I was behind the TV already today. Good evening, Frank Moore. Either one.
Either one's fine.
How about the other one?
The other one?
That didn't, that on my computer, that's why I had to. Down the other one. That's weird. Yeah, there we go. All right, why am I here today?
Our understanding is that you are here for a final approval in terms of the work we're proposing. Um, you were here in front of us once already for a concept. Um, and preliminary presentation, so. If you want to kind of give us a quick update in terms of any interchanges that have been made since the last time you appear. Um, we'd love to hear those, we have a resolution in front of us to keep them moving forward. Uh, it will have some conditions attached to it, uh, to make you aware of those.
Right, I'll start with the first issue, which is the sign, nothing's changed on the sign. That went into Doug's hand for review, so I'll be interested in the results of that. The second part was the deed agreement, uh, we got, we received instructions. On Monday on what to provide in terms of a. Revised site plan and we were to address whether, um. Oh, maybe this is covering everything I had there, there are no changes to landscaping on either properties. There are no changes to, um, lighting. No changes to parking. This, these, well, there's two drawings, one shows sixty seven fifty West Bend Deck. Where the manufacturing occurs, um. That is reduced, um, you're feeding the theme park, so nothing's changed. And this is sixty seven twenty five line street shows the existing parking, nothing's changed. Um, the, uh. Area of, of the. Reason why we're here is the gravel lot that goes from sixty seven twenty five over to sixty seven fifty. Um. Our council Jim Gozer provided a draft. Isment right away for review comment and. Once that is finalized, I'll update the drawings with the final version and stamp it in what she went for.
Has that been provided to our town council here?
Uh, the draft, the isment went to.
Yeah, it was sent over to you, Gene.
Okay, came from you, not from Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's one of those things that we're gonna want to look at in terms of. Access between the two sites, you know, and if we talked about this last time. You know, our board was concerned with trucks and. Access between the two pieces of property, there is no currently no process, cross access agreement between the two. They talked about.
I'm seeing if it's, yeah.
Yeah.
They've done city center.
Um, and so we talked about putting kind of a fire access gate in there that is only accessible by a fire apparatus. To not trucks leaving enough room for pedestrians or a golf cart, I think, to get through there. Between the two, but not having any truck access between the two, so. The question I had is. You may know better than us at this moment, does that cross access agreement that was sent to Doug? Provide full access between the two, as in you don't need any sort of gate any longer.
It does seem to, um. I see it here, I'm sorry, I didn't see it in my. It, it does, it's, it's a straight cross access agreement, you know, it doesn't, it's not limiting in any way. But I, I believe this board. Had talked about there being a limitation on trucks anyway, right?
It's not meant for daily traffic, it's not meant for large delivery trucks or anything like that, driving back and forth, that, that's our concern.
Correct, from March to June, the building was under renovation. And at that time when, uh, other staff members occupied all trucks were not allowed, have not been. Um, accessing that gravel drive. And the only car that really go across there is, is mine when I have to go get re-bought the paper. Um, so to put a gate there would limit such access. You know, I drive a little E V, but there are other, you know, people, they have to bring over a truckload or something. So a gate, um, would prohibit, um, access, um. And if you are saying that it needs to be a certain dimension, you prohibit the bigger trucks. Then I still, well, I don't certainly, I know that that is not, um. What direction that our senior leadership would like to go.
So they.
Open.
They would like to have it wide enough so that a big truck can go.
Well, you have to remember why this, this gravel lot exists. Yeah, I mean, I was there, but I was told of the police standoff. At that house on West Bennett, where all production had to see trucks going in and out for six hours. In the car. Full, full term for impact. I, I'm just, that's hearsay, I wasn't there, but this gravel lot would provide an emergency egress. In any future case.
So I think that's.
So having an upper locate really doesn't obstruct that.
How would you manage to operate it electronically, manually?
Get out of your truck and block it. If it's in an emergency use application. What's wrong with that? If, if that's what you're describing. Yeah, it's not for daily use.
Like I said. I'm here, I have business over here, so I may need to drive my vehicle over to get whatever. That. That, looking at the town code. We want to be as efficient as possible and not bring unnecessary traffic down on Lion Street and around Fly Road. Well.
Yeah, I think that's a big concern, it's about having any of the bird, bird dairy traffic online, but it's not what it's designed for.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is. We're reducing that traffic. Which aren't coming through here anymore. If they were, it would become my turn.
I think so either.
I, I guess, why can't we just do a sign that says, no heavy traffic trucks?
That's what I was saying, maybe we could put a note there saying this is not intended for large trucks. This is not intended for, you know, daily use or any drugs whatsoever. You know, and then a sign at both sides that says that, so a truck would be polite and go back. So.
If they just, it said that it's limited to. passenger vehicles and that's the access. Except in the case of emergency, is that going to cover it or is that still?
Yeah, that works for me. Right, well, that was a sign. I mean, my.
I understand the reason that the, the. Road was there. There are multiple points of access down Fly Road, right? From, from the. The Altidary site, not from that one, if that, if the gravel road didn't exist. There's only one road in and out.
Yes.
Isn't there a master plan for?
And the people that were there that made them lock the road, I mean, I don't think a. Gun, like a, a holdup with the cops outside of a building happens frequently in one building. It happened once and that's why this one's here, so. I, I don't know why you would need it then still.
Well, again.
Doug. You're sitting. Nathan, you're correct, there was, there's also for another entrance.
Right, that's part of the master plan for that site, that there is another site, another point of access.
Yes.
Out on the Fly Road, so. And. If that's the secondary point of access, why aren't they creating that point of access? And doing it in the right way versus gravel road that. We're gonna get the. The guy that parks his car in the back trying to get up to Fly Road, just running down the gravel road and out on the Lions.
Who's master plan, the town?
No.
No, you're right.
There's a whole secondary, there's a whole bigger plan to have a secondary entrance out to Fly Road.
I'm in engineering and that's not on my radar, so. If we can, you know, just focus on what we need to do here and not to appreciate.
Well, we have to look at the master plans because they've already come into us.
Oh, they have.
Yeah.
Okay.
It happens like before the original site.
So. I. What does this board feel as a. Sign is a. Couple of removable bollards.
Well, what, what actually happens, right, do trucks use it or is nobody using it?
Oh, no, like I said, you know, um. I was gonna go over to Altidary to get paper.
Right, so I, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that argument because I. And I understand that you can just drive the little gravel road, but you can also drive out to fly and around pick up your face from the back, right?
I, I really could. I really could.
It's a convenience thing at this.
It's a convenience thing.
Yeah.
It's there. And it keeps me from having to go out online. Gets into the traffic of Fly Road, back down Bennett. See. It's there.
Are you the only person using it?
Oh, no, oh, no.
How many other people would you say use it?
Uh, my, uh, boss had to bring over some cones for the driveway, we were doing. Some work around the building and I asked him to bring over some cone so that people could exit safely from here, so he. Got in his truck and run over the cones and unloaded.
On a regular daily basis, how many people would use it?
Unfortunately, I am not a, um. Traffic watcher. I have no clue, I'm in my cubicle without a window. I'm not facing this direction, so I cannot tell you how many, I just know that people show up. Okay, from over here, from other locations. And I don't know how they, they arrive to our building, but they come, so. And I mean. In the springtime, I know that I've walked it, you know, if I have to carry anything heavy over, I'll walk over for a meeting or whatever. And, uh, we have special requirements, you know, in, in accessing it. And I think putting signs, additional signs, we do have signs there now, five miles per hour. But definitely we can put signs saying restricted to certain vehicles at certain times. Uh, that's something that we can definitely get in place.
So. Yeah, I mean, I think what we're.
Employing cars.
So we're talking about. At this point. In order to, to help and move this along. Is to have signs top and bottom of the road. You know, that this is not. You know, it's for employee access only between the two. What size?
Well, that. We can, we would have her maybe make a sign package and come back for those.
Right, and she's gonna have to go back for sign approval anyway. General prove it, but she still needs to go back to town for approval of the sign. And that could be part of that, that resolution there. The limitation will be to employ pedestrian and, and employ personal vehicles and pedestrian access only. Unless it's an urgency, so for emergency vehicles. And then we're gonna give probably the. The purview to the board that neighbors start complaining, there starts being truck traffic, that that approval is revoked. So if it, if it moves beyond you or a couple of people. Here and now moving between the two sites. And we start seeing trucks coming out this way because they want to avoid.
For all of the employees.
Right, and start cutting through like that.
Right, you can go from building to building not to cut through to get home or something. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's what we're gonna do, we're just gonna, we're gonna. Give ourselves the ability to revoke that should be abused. So, but it will have signage marked up there. Is that comfortable enough?
I mean, I think enforcement is a, a real challenge in general, right, Tom? So I'm not, I'm not sure how it plays out.
We have our environmental health and safety folks and, um, as I, I alluded to. If we're gonna walk between there, we have to wear our, our high vis, so they will enforce it, believe me, they will. Um, I work with them to get their appropriate sign, it'll be like one of those seasonal use road access restricted, it'll be. To convey the message that you desire.
Yeah, and I think we just, we're gonna leave it open to the residents of lines that, you know, if it becomes a problem, we're gonna revisit. You know, use of that road.
For like additional partnership, would your environmental health and safety people put a rule in there that that's not to be used by other vehicles? So when new employees come on, they're trained not to use that site because as a, as an employee, how would you know not to zip around through there?
So, um. Since I was hired on to burn and was responsible for the renovation of this building. I have, um, provided to every new person our. In-house. Requirements and responsibilities, I will be responsible in new folks in this building for what to do with that.
But if you're down there in a monumental, and it's not written down.
Oh, we have policies written down.
So that's what I'm saying, would you add it to your policies for?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Saying that that's not a technical.
Yes, yes, we have, um, our engineers, um. Drive by ones we, our policy, fewer policies. Often.
Yeah, I think that with the company, so many employees without it being.
Well, listen, I'll share a story with you, as a new person we burned. I saw a lot of people coming in the back door. Okay, um, of a facility where the. Truck drivers go in, this bathroom, a lot of the truck ability, and I was happening, well, I happened to be going. You there a little too often and, yeah, there was a prophecy in place, so I don't go back anymore. You know, it was communicated, I follow it, I would hope that other folks will follow, they need to follow this one.
So, but I'll do. Yeah, really, because, you know, you, they should come with these signs would say, I think it belongs to a dedicated part of the sign package. So they say that's a separate. That will be part of the sign package. In directional, maybe.
Directional, maybe. Draft resolution for two eight twenty twenty four, Burn Derry Lions Road, motion to approve the site plan last dated. Last dated twelve seventeen is approved with the following findings and conditions. Applicant has presented a site plan which proposes minor changes to the site, where the site is now utilized as business offices for Burn Derry. It is contiguous to the main high pack site where operations in the Altaderry are situated. Due to the nature of Lion Street, it would be prudent to allow truck traffic to cut from Lion Street through the site and onto the main operation site. Accordingly, this approval is made with the following conditions. One, the sign as presented with the sign plan package is approved. However, the applicant must present an additional sign package to to conditions. A, provide a directional sign to be approved by this board to be placed at the entrance on Lions Road, which states office entrance only. All trucks, all truck deliveries to Fly Road entrance.
You want to discuss that language?
That's the one at the entrance.
Should be Benedict. You come from Fly Road, that's Benedict, to get into the site.
Lions.
Right, you can throw that line before that, Fly Road. Oh, should be Benedict Road entrance.
No, it says all truck deliveries.
Where it says fly.
Says fly. So you actually do all sorts of kind of mix up. Yeah, thank you. So that's the one at the entrance down there, says stops people at that point. On the northerly end of the premises and facing the Altaderry site, a directional sign be approved by this board shall be placed at the entrance. Shall be placed.
Yeah.
Which states no through truck traffic.
Does that sound good? So coming from from the site, it will say no through truck traffic.
I think I think we need to add, well, we can actually, this one, get them.
I I think there's too many unknowns to prove anything. Until it comes back as a full package, like we're 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 actually designing all these parts and pieces, but we don't have anything to actually see or react to. I think it needs to come back as personally. I wouldn't be able to vote on it until you package. And we're asking them to come back anyway, right?
I don't know that they need to be back in front of us for the sign, because we're approving the sign right now.
The main sign.
The main sign.
The gravel's okay, the site plan's okay. We just need an additional sign package. These two signs.
So for the for the through traffic, and as we know, the traffic, there's the office entrance sign. Is there other language that you want to put in there?
Were they always sort of signed up that line?
Right here, yeah, it was always.
Yes.
Right. That's where that's where it started.
Well, there's the main sign they've got, just their just their here, this is who we are sign. Then we're talking about another directional sign right at the driver that says.
That that's what I'm saying, like that's looking another sign. Maybe they'd wanna combine the two. If they did it, if they did it correctly, I feel like the two would be one sign rather than.
So.
Rather than multiple signs.
What other, so we don't really have any other. Kind of address the through traffic in here, right? So.
Well, and we're basically approving the site as a um as a change of use. That's.
Combining.
Right, and then we can.
And then and then we. And the cross access.
Right, and we can require that they come back to us with the sign package.
I can go to Granger tomorrow and put whatever is needed for customized sign in.
Well, I think what we're asking is that you come back to us with what your proposed sign package is. That's the concern that's being discussed right now.
I'm flexible.
I guess the question is, do we, can we get through everything but the sign package and review a sign package? That's satisfactory to the board for.
Well, I I hear what Doug's saying, but she has to come back anyway. We can look at the sign package. We know that basically everything else is okay. The main sign's okay. And then we can also see the placement of those signs.
So let's. I'm gonna I'm gonna move right now to to table this for for this motion or for this meeting here. Let's ask that you get your package together, complete, run it through Doug, come back to us, get it addressed.
Will do.
Thanks.
So just to understand, were we, were you happy with that language that they're gonna put it on some kind of a reasonable directional sign, office entrance only, all truck deliveries to Benedict Road? Or do you want office entrance only because then aren't you encouraging employees to come through there?
Well, no, it's office for this office building. There's that office building that's there.
And you don't like too many words, I.
Well, I agree with you.
I think what's important is in the final resolution, intent of what we're talking about should be pretty well articulated.
Documented on the drawings.
Yeah, I think that gives the ammunition to to you to have something for your company policies. See, we have a resolution that says we have to.
And then did you mention that your color shading is covering some information that you added?
Yeah, so I don't know, Doug, Doug, can you go over and see if it's there? It was.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, you have the resolution. I'd like to.
Try reducing it, Doug, let's see.
Yeah, so the drawing on top is from previous projects, and actually, you're supposed to two of them side by side. Essentially, show the.
This is a uh a D side, definitely. Yeah, all right. Can you go up? Oh, there it is, that's I. So this is the draft. Uh, he's gonna, maybe I'll be done. Gem paired, and then I just know that what didn't change based on instructions that came out of Doug's office.
So um I'm just actually, I'm emailing to him right now, just asking him to send me that document and word, make some tweaks based on what we talked today circulated.
Right. So I'm going to table the approval for now. Is there a second? Kathy, on favor? Great. Get those addressed, we're gonna take it.
Will do. Thank you very much for your time.
And then last up, we've got pathology lab or consent.
My name is John Murphy. I'm a grantee member of Upstate Pathology Lab, the ownership, obviously, which is the capital bill. Uh, joining us tonight, we're much professionals, Chris Charlin from Colliers, Burman Engineering, Jim Messenger is our attorney. And on the, I guess Zoom, we have both architectural and architectural partners, Chase Construction out of Rochester and Slam Architects out of Iowa. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about the project, a stern statement about the site, and I can put an architect's presentation. Thank you for having us tonight. We're proposing to build a three-story, one hundred and eight thousand square foot medical building on the Upstate Bone and Joint.
Could you make it a little bigger, just to stimulate the?
Close the two hours down the right and left.
So it's it's a proposal is to place one hundred and eight thousand square, what, three-story medical office building on the Upstate Bone and Joint site in the westerly portion of the site. You'll see uh Interstate four eighty-one on the eastern side and on Fly Road. Probably the site, which is about thirty something. All right, I'll turn this over to him. He's a better one. Answer questions.
Right. So as he mentioned, so obviously, you know, I'm I'm Kurt Charlin. Colliers, it's also listed at Burman because we've been transitioning from Burman to Colliers, so it gets a little. So we're we're Colliers now. So as as John mentioned, this this particular site is adjacent to the Bone and Joint. And, you know, we have Fly Road here, we have four eighty-one over there. And the proposed access for the new project will be off from the existing drive that comes back into the Bone and Joint Center. Uh, we've already done all of our phase one, phase two, and part metal. Uh, we've done traffic studies to show that uh no mitigation support to drive or fly road. I'm sort of prepared to submit that. Probably done all of our our chip load. Also, we have feedback from them as well. Uh, one thing that came up on the threatened and endangered is this site's located within a mile of a known bat roosting site. So we discussed this earlier at the workshop. One of the factors is kind of we have this window between November first and March thirty-first to clear the site uh trees um before we have to look at another option to get otherwise to install the project in the next November to be able to clear the site. So one thing we need to work through, um as John mentioned again, there's gonna be the three-story, one hundred and eight thousand square foot building. Um, and then we've situated the parking in behind it. For those of you that aren't familiar, uh it's it's quite a drop. I mean, like thirty feet or so from Fly Road, kind of, there's a berm and then it drops down into the site. So visibility from the road itself, even the third three-story building, really won't be very much, with the exception of up up near the northern side where the entrance is. Um, you know, we're gonna try to retain as much of the vegetation in the back of the building. We're probably within the limit of disturbance, about twenty-five feet or so. Something reasonable to where we don't have to worry about trees toppling over uh out of the parking and things like that. So we're gonna re- remain some existing educated buffer, which is pretty substantial tree vegetation. Um, utilities, water uh will be off from uh the existing system along the drive. Sanitary, we're proposing to connect as a main uh county sewer might be operated by the town as well uh over along four eighty-one. So our sewer's gonna run up here and connect into that. Um, electric communications off Fly Road, similar to where the Bone and Joint comes in. There's a corridor that comes in off of there. Um, we're proposing our stormwater. We have a couple of bio retention areas you can see on the plan. We have a larger stormwater pond down uh in the lower corner down here. When we first kind of had some discussions with the town, there was potential for wetlands. We had delineated some out there, walked it with the Army Corps. We have since received a favorable letter from them. Um, non-dock construction also, all the wetlands are away in the sites. We don't have any issues with wetlands on this on this particular site. So we did retool the site, kind of put the stormwater in a more convenient place because we're ultimately discharging to the existing retention bonds there as part of the joint center. There is gonna be a a retaining wall about eight to ten feet along the back of the parking here. Again, this is a very steep slope in the back. So we don't wanna keep chasing the grades up in the back. Outside of that, you know, lighting, landscaping, things like that are all uh in compliance with with code. Um, the one thing that we do wanna pursue here, we're showing two hundred and fifty-five parking spaces for the facility, which is consistent with um Upstate Medical's uh employees that they're gonna have at this facility. There isn't gonna be a visitor population here, it's only gonna be employees. They have three shifts, the first being the largest. So we don't wanna overpark the site. Um, so we are gonna ask for um to pursue a variance for reduction in parking. We've shown additional future parking of two hundred and fifty spaces on the site as well. So we are gonna try to pursue the variance for reduction in parking as well as the ability to uh land bank that additional two hundred and fifty spaces and only park two fifty-five, which is getting the least of the facility itself on this site.
So you're still gonna need, still need a variance for two hundred.
Two hundred fifty, but two hundred fifty is provided, two hundred fifty would be.
We have two hundred and fifty-five provided, two hundred and fifty futures faces shown on the law. Seven hundred and twenty-one is needed.
I think seven twenty-six actually, based on that, yeah, seven twenty-six is what's required by code currently based on the square footage.
So whatever that map works out for, but it's two hundred and twenty-six, you know, short, basically, right? So five oh five oh five is a high enough for a typical variance, a third, it's a third.
Well, yeah, because twenty-five percent.
So they.
What's the interior usage of the building?
So this is a pathology lab. It's not an office space, which makes it kind of unique. It's not, it's not as high density in terms of what it would be for the use, so.
Do we have something to enter codes and all that?
Well, the way that we have to look at this right now is if pathology moves out, the building still exists and office function moves in. Probably would look at it in that.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, so.
So this is a very custom building as well. It's built for the user, so it would be very difficult to make that transition. And and I'm not sure there's many precedents where an office pathology would be switched over to the office state.
Should note, the RFP that the state issued and awarded was for consolidation of all the remote pathology labs throughout Alton County and to upgrade to a state-of-the-art facility that would support seventeen counties uses. So it's a, this is a build-to-suit building, fully furnished, but under the lease. So it's uh designed purely for two hundred and sixty employees to go through three shifts, not two sixty each shift, but two sixty total. Uh, three shifts each day. The only access vehicles besides the uh employees would be the service vehicles that pick up and deliver, and that's it. There is also, we've mentioned at the study session, that drone component, they've tried to factor in, and they've worked with the FAA and the Syracuse Airport. They're proceeding with the approvals for that, which needs to back you on as well. And there would be, I think rooftop was eliminated for a drone landing site, so it'd just be off on the site.
Get it off the side.
But as as uh as mentioned, it'd be very difficult to convert this to it is a long-term lease with the state as well, and they would have no other.
What is the length of the lease?
We start out at.
Start fifteen.
Fifteen with a bunch of. And the difficulty for them, there would be no other pathology facility to serve seventeen counties, which serves this county, then they have others that bring in a little over fifty percent of their business. So to end the business, they have to start over someplace else, and it's a massive undertaking.
So this is consolidating multiple different branches into one.
By locations.
By location, how many, what's the staff count that you currently have amongst all those locations?
It's it's partly, it's increasing from around two, I'm estimating around two hundred and forty to about two hundred, it increased to about two hundred and sixty.
So roughly eighty-six per shift.
Well, no, I think I gave a breakdown.
It's not, it's not even distribution.
It's two sixty total, and it'd be split into three shifts. So if I keep one shift, might be a large, like the day shift.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two secondary shifts are only like in thirty rays. There's not many people there on the second.
It's a planned planned occupants, or is that the current occupants if you plan on growing? Because, I mean, it's a new business because you're, yeah, so is that the optimum? If we get all the employees we want, we're gonna be at two sixty.
The building design plan, it's been a year of negotiation with the lease with the state, and the plan changes from time to time. I think we first came in as a hundred ten thousand square feet, then they came back at one oh five, then one fifteen, one eighteen. And the final approved set was where we're at now, a little over a hundred and eight.
That's not a big change.
Yeah, I mean. What is, what's the acreage of the the site, twenty-three and change?
It was thirty-two, the full site, and now it's twelve and twenty.
So there's a required number of parking spaces.
Required is seven point six, I believe, based on the square footage per code with as an office. The property is one three, one eight, three acres, this part of which. Which is this piece, so it it figures out for here.
So. Parking's an issue.
So would, can you just go over one more time the number of spots that you're gonna bin and then the number of spots that you planned out?
Yes, correct. So we have two hundred and fifty-five parking spaces shown on the site plan. We do have, there's eighteen future uh kind of showing up on this uh top. But those with the addition of the two hundred and thirty-two that we show across the street are two hundred and fifty additional future parking spaces. So it would be, so it would be five hundred and five, five space. If it was a full build out.
Right, so.
Can I ask a quick question? What's the status with the IDA right now?
Application started with all of our.
Application started with all of our data. Looks, has not complied with it.
It's also working on the the CTO, yeah. So, um, I mean, we can do a better agency.
He says that would make it name IDA as well.
Well, but but name them as, I think, I just worked with it on another.
They have additional.
They have just a part of it.
Yeah, and that's probably lead agency.
Not works with him on that.
Yes, yes, this is. Need to be part of that.
No, because it will advantagefully, when he and I worked on it, advantagefully, the business dog, which is. So, I I think we can do that, with clear the.
Clear the, we need to keep it, certainly, this is a concept of being, so we're not moving, anything else, nothing. The other thing, we need to address parking, figuring out parking situations. The state, yeah, but we're not gonna figure it out here, but.
Would you like to go over the buildings as well? We have.
We'll go on more.
Okay.
During our, we, as we said, we need to treat their. Which is where I'm showing, if we look at the building, we look at the site. We need to understand from them what the extent of the tree clearing would be, are we comfortable with?
Do we have any concern that we would say yes to tree clearing and then that wouldn't be allowed by the back?
The discussion, well.
Well, so here's the thing, I mean, tree clearing on a parcel would be like not mowing your lawn, right? So for John's perspective, even if this project was to modify or change, it still makes his parcel more marketable by clearings. Now, we're not ground disturbance, so we're not creating any disturbance, we're merely clearing the trees out and opening it up. So it makes his parcel in general more marketable, just to present, like, because you know, it's it's clearing those those that, you know, you're able to have better sight lines, things like that.
So it's just clearing and grubbing.
It's a hundred percent clearing and grubbing, and it's it's really to address the fact that we have the small window of opportunity for potentially the bats. Now, they may not be in here, but to avoid any issues with these.
Right, definitely, what is that window, when is that closed?
March thirty first is the end of it. So anything after, so April first and November first, you essentially, unless you do a very detailed study, um, you know, I'm not even sure how they conducted with that. People were goggles and.
Probably consulted and called the Batman.
So it would be best to try to avoid that and and kind of get in advance of it.
So I think the things that we care of tonight, certainly the clearing the agency. More comfortable with the direction on this to help them move forward and get clearing, grubbing underway before restriction, because otherwise, it's not till November you have another window.
Correct, yes, November first and March thirty first is.
We have, we have an opportunity now, if we're comfortable letting them start this, we'll work out the rest of this.
So this has been reviewed by the planning engineers yet?
So this is not, we have not submitted, we haven't asked to submit that yet, we're we're certainly ready for it. We have a pretty detailed set of plans.
Right, we're all, we're ninety nine percent of the limitations on the rest of the site here, exactly. Yeah, I mean, I wanted to set the conversation up.
You can, so you mentioned the clearing limits, this is the grading plan, for instance, so you know, you can kind of see our limited disturbance here, and this is all the native hill that we're leaving. So we're basically just clearing out before the building.
There are a couple of recent examples where this has been allowed, the the town library site, and Amazon, just to be site ready.
Yeah, I think there, I mean, I think there is precedent for doing it, and I just, I think it's important that, at the very least, that the the board's engineers looked at it, had a review, some malicious comments, and that we, and we have at least a clear direction on where we're going with the parking and the parking footprint on the site. To me, that seems reasonable. Probably could do it quickly.
Right.
How much time do you need to clear?
I'm not sure, but I I would imagine there'd be probably a a week or two, they could probably, it it it's, you know, it's it's got enough trees in there to, you know, they, I would imagine would take them a couple of weeks to get it fully cleared and grubbed and get them very able to have, probably in the chip and stuff, I would imagine.
So in the meantime, if they got the grading plan in with the clearing limits, Mark had an opportunity to have it at our next meeting in two weeks. We could look to give them the green light for the clearing, continue to work through the rest of it. Is that fair?
Is that enough for you?
A hundred percent, we should know. Department responded back and said it wasn't acceptable without a site. In consultation with Jamie and town attorney. When the request came.
So the clearing, the clearing without a site, without a site plan approval?
Yes.
So, I mean, in reality, there's no way that we're getting through a site plan approval before March thirty first on this right now.
Nobody's really seen a full package.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Tuesday, right, and this is when this first came in. You know, you also, you have, you've also got a huge parking variance here that, right, I mean, I'm not sure that the CBAs are giving anybody a balance into one parking spaces, but I could be wrong. I don't want to be the bearer bearer of bad tidings, but.
Well, I will tell you this, you, we can put twenty five percent in reserve, this board, twenty five percent in reserve.
But it starts to put on the site.
Still gonna go somewhere outside, right now, they're only showing five hundred built out total, total.
And there's not an approval, there's not another's.
Well, I wouldn't say that, we, I mean, we, we could, we could feasibly, I mean, there's, there's a lot of land here, so we could extend this parking lot down, down the line, you know, to show future additional, future spaces, it's it's feasible. I don't need realistic, but.
So you should put them up to seven hundred something, feasible, but.
I don't know, I mean, that seems like a very high number.
By how many you can allow and put in reserve, that's that's the situation.
They can only put twenty five.
We can, it's this board.
Yeah.
So, I, well. Are we, are we saying that this, that this may not be approved, is that the concern, and we don't want them to clear? Because it might not be approved.
Well, that's what it sounds like, the conversation between you and Matt and Dark was, is that we are not going to issue a clearing without a full site plan approval. And I guess what I'm asking is.
Well, we have, we have sometimes taken a different tack, the question is, on this one, do we, do we take a different tack? That's, that was the question, like, from the.
Yeah, it it's, it's getting comfortable on what the final number is that they have to, they have to comply with, that they can then go to CBA to get the variance. Okay, we have a game plan for that. And I think, I I would feel more comfortable about, about the layout. But I I feel like right now.
Forwardly and be thorough.
I guess so.
Well, the risk is in ours, it's theirs, it's not.
I mean, you know, I kind of go back to, you know, clearing the site is, you know, it's a little bit irrelevant to even the site plan itself. I mean, it's John's property, and to try to make it, you know, clear and more marketable, things like that. I mean, if the clearing had to increase, that would be one thing.
We would sit, only, I guess, come here, clearing, we have a clearing, or one of the, one of the few boards, yeah. Or what is it, few boards that hit it, yeah.
That a clearing, a a clearing of land from it actually comes to this board.
Okay, could we submit for that?
Yeah.
Just in the spirit of, it sounds like, yes, but we're trying to do the right thing if our land order.
Right.
So, I mean, we're, so there, and I wish, I wish this project was moving along four months ago. You know, we wouldn't be backed up against the March thirty first date, which, you know, in reality, with process, we need to get through site plan approval, it it sounds like, prior to issuing any sort of a clearance for, for site clearing or anything like that, right?
I think the other thing that's really. Is, you know, what, what type of mitigator actions are possible on here, right? I mean, to to, you know, get this like state fair parking here, is that what you really want? I mean, you want to go up, right? You want to go up with the building, you want to scooch the building, I mean, there's a lot of other options on the table other than what's shown to you right now, and I think, right, and then we just started talking about this two days ago. Do you have the ability to put parking garage in? Sorry, we, we have parking garage in the town.
No, we, we, so. And I, correctly, but it's, this also could, this could be a parking. How many?
Can you show right now, Lee?
No, I know, I, I'm asking you.
That's what I'm looking for, right?
That's, that's a plausible solution, maybe not for the parking. Future, future, future parking, I mean, you know, the other thing is, I mean, you know, we're being told that there's only going to be two hundred and fifty people worth of people, it's the basis for that. You know, from my perspective, if I go back and picture, right, there are, there are, yeah, right.
Yeah, but they're, they're telling us the, the, the number of employees that they have.
Yeah, they have, they said that they planned.
This is reserved. Would you, would you like a letter from the, I was gonna be off with you, instead of the number of employees?
Right, yeah, if it was a big volume, right?
Would you, would a letter from the pathology lab say what the number of employees would be?
The other thing that you have, okay, right. All, sorry. So we'll be looking at something like this, what's, what's the ability for expansion inside, right? Working in there at a healthy basis, right, was the percentage of building that consumes, maybe a great, that made less than what it is. Um, what type of deliveries do you have? Um, you know, don't know that it's really reasonable to think that nobody's ever been in this building. Um, you know, so there's, there's some type of buffering here that you can, that you are. So we have two hundred and fifty more land readily available than the requested. I don't, I don't see the, you gotta, twenty year lease with the state, we're not going anywhere. And if, if state leaves, well, then they got a building with, it's under parked, and then you will try to come back here with a change of use and enjoy the. There's, there's.
There's no chance to come back.
No.
Another, I can tell.
He doesn't fit, he don't get it. Like, why would I sign a lease if I, if I can't park my employees there? I'm very confused by the delay here, right? We, if they, if they had to, if they lost a tenant, they're not gonna get another tenant, unless they can park it. And my company's not gonna move in, it can't park my employees, right? So they're gonna have to have another employ, another company that needs available parking. And that's their risk.
Well, at, so at the moment, the issue at hand, the issue at hand now is the clearing program, right? So that's um, under one ninety two dash one oh seven, um, site plan review by the planning board is required in order to clear land. Now, that's not, they could just come in for. If this happens to have a project associated with it, so that's all the better. So I'm sure that a final site plan review has to, we had to clear the land, but this board has to feel comfortable about the clearing of the land. Right now, we propose that Mark Parrish look at it for um, for clearing and, you know, that I guess, was there something else? Look at the grading plan.
No, I think it was really just in terms of looking at clearing, is there any adverse impact?
Right.
And and get, and kind of develop a game plan for either the variance for parking and what the parking layout, where we're going with the parking layout.
So, so that's gonna be the next, that's gonna be the next issue, right? But right now, if they're saying our, our request is site plan review for clearing of land. We can, we can mark like, look at that. And then, the, then the next, and, you know, sometimes when there's a clearing of land, we're like, well, you better leave buffers, you better leave these trees. It's gotta actually be looked at, and you'll be like.
So do you need the land cleared for the building or for the parking?
Just for the bats, for the whole, for the whole area, there's, there's a, right, there's a significant amount of gray.
You're not gonna have the building built before the end of November first.
No, it's.
No, no.
No, but so, my, my understanding is they wanted to be in the ground, you said in April, right? So they want to be in the ground in April.
Well, that's gonna be pretty fast with the IDA and everything, yeah, and you go to July.
But they want to be.
In the summer.
They want to be in the ground before November. So when you come back for a site clearing plan, maybe you're just site clearing the building area, and the area to mobilize. Rather than the entire site, and then you can do the rest of the site then after you have all this wiggle room. Because I think you would have more comfort with the, with everybody on both boards, because they're talking about going to the engineers and going through the planning board. And if you're not asking for the world, then it's a little bit easier to say, okay, we're gonna do this swap of land clearing, rather than all of that.
Yeah, but unfortunately, we have to go back to, you know, if we only cleared this, you know, site construction, so stormwater ponds, grading and earthworks, all that stuff, erosion control, even setting all that stuff on a project level, can't happen anywhere else outside that clearing limit until next November first, which is completely not feasible. So saying we're gonna try to get into April or even early May or whatever, is more, you know, and then the contractors are gonna get in there, they're gonna put in construction entrances, they're gonna build silt sinks, you know, where they need to intercept your soils, erosion control, that type of stuff has to be developed as they start to do mass earthwork and grading, you know? So I don't think that, you know, just proportion of sites.
So you can see your outline of where you're clearing.
That's what it was shown.
Yeah, that's what I was showing. This, this hole, this area, right, so here's your parking, here's your building, here's your, we're really not clearing very far beyond the parking lot. So we, you can, it's probably very hard to tell her, but you can see how tight these contours are, it's like a one on one and a half slope behind here. This is why this is gonna stay very.
And just for clarity, you're not grading, you're just simply looking, clearing, so that your existing grade is gonna remain as is.
One hundred percent, there's gonna be, because we don't want to disturb soil yet either, because we're not gonna get into starting the swift and get road control and all that. They're gonna go in and just knock down all the big trees and stuff, so that we don't have to worry about, you know, bats gonna hit the roosting within the zone, and then installing the project for um, you know, eight months, nine months or whatever.
So.
Um, so that's really the goal, is to clear, no ground disturbance.
Do we have this?
It came Tuesday.
No, you, you, you do not have the full site plan package, I, you know, nobody is asked for you, and we rarely submitted for concept design, but we're ready to. We can submit all our, our SWIP reports and, you know, so.
No, right, I get that, it's just that now, now you're asking for something that's in the purview, so we're trying to.
I agree, yeah, right.
To.
Certainly ready.
Forward, but if, if there were no project here, they would have to come to this board for the clearing. For site clearing, or the code.
And with that, would they, if they, if there was no project here, and they just came in and said, I want to clear the site so that I can attract a prospective builder, would they need to show a site plan in there, or would they just show, here are the limits?
They're gonna, they would not have to show a site plan.
So could we submit a separate application that kind of cover that now, front?
It's just that, we, I mean, when you know things, you know things, but, and that's good, that's information's better. So, do, do you have to put in a separate clearing application, I would say yes, so that Mark can look at it, Mark can look at the grading plan, and, and he can give the advice on the clearing? And then give it to this board pretty quickly, right? Is someone trying to talk to me?
And a chance for comments, I mean.
Yes.
If we.
What track are they on? Or a A? So the next meeting makes the first part of March, yeah. Right, but that's, and that's what I'm trying to figure out is.
But that's what the site plan, we're just talking about clearing.
If, if we're just talking about clearing, in, in two weeks, can we get to a point where Mark has reviewed this and, you know, you need to get this material in, have Mark review it, and see if this floor comfortable with the clearing, while we push the rest of the review on the site plan.
When did you say you wanted to excavate?
Well, I mean, typically, you're, you're looking, you start doing ground disturbance, I mean, I mean, you're typically looking as a weather broom, I mean, we're in a, we're a pattern right now, you could probably start tomorrow. But if we got a foot of snow, you know, next week, it, it changes, I mean, that usually coincides with, you know, that, that March, April timeframe, right?
So basically.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
What do people feel comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with the clearing part, you know, putting some of that. Because this, this doesn't exist right now, actually.
Right, right. Is that, so, that's fifty percent.
They're staying tight to where they're gonna be.
Right.
I think that if they come for the clearing, I would, I would protect them.
Yeah, sorry, I missed the beginning of what you said, but we're still kind of holding to having an engineer review.
Yep.
Um, so that we have feedback, I mean, because they're. I mean, cause there, I mean, the purpose of this is that we identify any major red flags that, you know, hopefully don't derail or have to require change of the design. The idea is that we have a chance to look at it and uh, it's thorough enough.
So we're trying to separate the two of them right now so that they can get them clearly and have a review.
I just don't think, I think Mark has to do, Mark has to be given.
And what we're asking them to do is to submit that stuff so that.
Submit everything that you have is my.
I, I am confident that the design is solid enough.
Yeah.
If we have enough detail and full set of plans, if we can provide Mark now.
Yeah, we're gonna ask for Mark, we're gonna ask them for reviews in the lens of getting the clearing done while we push the rest. Before you need to complete the rest of the site plan.
Absolutely, understand.
Needs to all address.
Correct.
Diligence on that side.
Yep, before we would break grass and clear it forward, so you have to get you by the middle of that. Forward, right? That was a hundred percent. I mean, we're only gonna do the right thing, you know, we're trying to meet that. It's, it gets difficult in these periods. We're not even in the window of where the bats are, so.
And so, that's a good point, so this is a concept, so where are our track system, our submissions? You'll be given, you give your submission to the, to Doug. You will be given, you're on track with me right now. To meet, you meet the first meeting of everyone. There are submission deadlines that are in there. You know, you've got a full list of all the days that you need to, to take your materials uh, to get to the, for, for our review. Don't make that, you're onto the next one. So it sounds like you've got enough material already that you have to make those submissions. We will, if you can have those materials in, I would say get them built, have them moved out of your, out of the office tomorrow. On the clearing, on the clearing.
So do we, do we need to submit any separate application for that or anything, or are you talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, technically, yes, I mean, just, just do a site clearing application.
I di, I didn't see it. I mean, I didn't get to talk to Doug. I didn't, I see a site point application, I don't see a site.
It's the same one, it's just.
So we'll just submit that, I'll send it to Doug.
Just make that material and then.
Just kind of decide that.
Simultaneous, simultaneous, try and take care of that at the next meeting in two weeks, site clearing.
No, this is, this is a pretty, just understand that this is up to the board. It's a pretty big exception to what we've been doing. Um, it's, but you know, we're asking Mark, I think that's why it's gonna be very fast. Um, that's up to, you know, pleasure of the, the chair, obviously, if anyone's to do that.
So when you get it in, the next, he's on track A. Speed possibly be on as much as, correct?
Well, I, I thought that you were saying for this, for the clearing.
Site clearing, site clearing is an exception that we're asking. We're asking Mark that they go into the B for the site clearing, which is in two weeks. The, the review of the project. With totality for the rest of the phase will be made. So the submission deadline for track B was today, right? Which I'm asking them to give you all the materials. And that, that is strictly for Mark review and strictly for the site clearing aspect. And then do we need, we need a separate application on the approval?
Not for the site clearing.
In a site plan or is it site clearing? Site clearing, I'm not sure we have a site clearing.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be, it's, it's not gonna be a county action.
The site clearing permit is the separate view or.
Site clearing is not gonna, is not gonna be, um, subject to county review.
You, you were asking us tomorrow to utilize the site plan application in the form of, of, as clearing.
Okay, right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit a full time set in a site plan.
Okay, so what do you want, what do you want for this? Cause we've never done this.
Well, we have, eh, we haven't done it recently, but we've done it long ago. No one has come for just a site clearing application in a very long time till we have done it. Um, so, hey, I'm not the engineer, you tell me what they need.
Well, we already told, we already, we already went out and reckoned and told them they couldn't do it, right? Because they needed a site plan, right, not location.
No.
And I'm saying, it needs the full engineering package.
Right, and that's what they're submitting tomorrow is that full engineering package which you have, correct? Is going to Mark, it is going to Mark under the.
The application is only for the clearing.
Only the clearing, be reviewed right now so that we can get comments back from Mark to them for two weeks from now to find out whether or not we're. Mark's comfortable, what, so what I'm hearing is we need a complete submission tomorrow. And then we will review it and make sure it's complete. And then we will, or we will tell Mark that we have it here and we want to move forward with just a clearing submission for the twenty second.
So when you say a complete application, are you talking all the traffic studies, all the error reports? Are you talking? Trying to understand, that's a lot.
If there were no plan, although we have the advantage of knowing generally where to submit, but the clearing applications really based on, we'd like to clear this site for future development. And they're not grading, it's just, uh, we're cutting route. I mean, you, you tell me what we want to accept. Because like I said, I mean, I, at least.
I know that we've, we've done it that way though. I mean, we've always looked at clearing in advance as part of a bigger site plan.
Right.
And we're not.
Clearing in advance. Yeah.
Well, no, but it, not, not at the first week of the project submission, like towards the end, we've gone through a review, like it's gone through some significant work session.
But there is a provision for clearing. That is separate.
And that's why I think James was saying before, we know what we know now after them sharing this information with us, right? But if they were just to come in and say, I'm trying to market this property, I want to site clear X amount of acres or wherever this space is. We wouldn't necessarily, if there was no plan here, we wouldn't necessarily have a plan to work from. We would be reviewing it under the purview of, they're clearing this X amount of acres to market the property. So somebody will come in and develop a site plan for us to review. So we know what they want to do here and we know, we can see what they're trying to limit that space to. Is that a limiting?
The, the advantage, I guess.
The advantage.
But it is. We have given clearing permits, it's been a very long time since we did it under that particular provision.
I mean, I mean, realistically, if, if we didn't have information on a future building here, I'm not sure why we would approve the clearing permit on this. Not sure I would, just to clear, cut this site and walk away.
That, well, that's a, it's a thing.
Right, I don't know if I would.
Right, so. And that's, it really isn't fair, but in a sense, we know that, you know, they're doing it for a particular purpose to progress the construction. Like I said, I wish this was four months ago, but here we are. So, I think what we're asking is, is that this, you get this package in which shows building location, shows the clearing area. Shows rating, information.
Well, send, send civil site drawings, little site plan application, do you need another short form with, except that we have to be.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and that's, that's what we'll submit.
That's the kind of patient clearing.
Well, it's the same, it's the same thing under the.
Well, I'm gonna, we're in the description, we're gonna, we're gonna change the description, we're gonna, we have now to just the clearing.
We just wanted to go through.
The sentence, you have more information.
Also, then, so that, that gets you just the site clearing portion of this, which hopefully we're gonna address in two weeks. At the same time. The next track A submission deadline, I don't have it up in front of me, is two weeks from today, I believe. Is that right?
Two, is it?
It's two weeks before the next year.
Yeah.
So it's two weeks from today would be, you would need to put in your site plan application. And that would be the start of, of reviewing the whole site plan.
They usually have those dates from LIA already, I think.
They haven't put the, when they put the application in, they get those dates, they get put onto the track, they're already on track.
Yeah, I thought they got it in their last morning meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we submitted a concept review application, but I didn't get it tracked.
So, if, all we're looking at is clearing. What's the engineering clearing?
Well, I think.
There's nothing to review.
That's what I'm confused about.
There's nothing to review.
I thought that was more so you could look at it and say, yeah, we see what's going on here, we see the project, we see your planning for stormwater, we know you're not clearing to fly road, you're creating. It's providing a little more information for you guys to get comfortable that this is, you know, the project is doing its due diligence to, to address what it would for site plan approval.
I mean, it may be a draft comment from Mark, but yeah, I think he's, he's looking at the whole project.
Yes.
He's looking, has to look at everything.
Yes.
That's what I'm expecting.
If he has to look at everything, we're not gonna be out in two weeks.
That's right.
Okay, okay, but to me, that's important. Even if, because even if Mark comes back with draft comments and says, I've done my first review, it's taken me two weeks.
But, but let's separate this, right? What is Mark doing his review on? He's doing.
The whole project.
But he's doing it for the site clearing, right? He's not reviewing the whole part, he's not reviewing the retention bonds and all of, he's reviewing the area that they're looking to clear.
To, to clear it, what's, I mean, was it a procedure though?
Well, then, then it's easy, right? And so then at this point, he's, I think he's looking at, are there any big red flag that are in the A?
Yes, which requires review of the whole project.
But what if he didn't have a project and just came in for cutting rep?
I'm not sure that I'm a circular argument. I wouldn't approve it. I wouldn't approve it.
Actually, Mark will have the information that he needs. Looks to tell us that this. You know, put the, put the, put the word engineer next to it, you know, dictionary, you'll get Mark's character, he'll be at like, oh, daddy, what do you want me to do? Help there. You know, it's gonna, so.
Right, alright.
I think he'd want all the information that's available, available. But he could get it if we had it in archives, which we don't have all this yet, because we're such in the early phase, even though we keep hearing that you've been working on it for over a year. So I keep going back to what Matt or what Dave said is I do wish that we could. Work this through. Cause I have a feeling you had it done.
No, no, we did not, we just wrapped up today, but.
It's taken a year to get us to the plan point through.
There's a lot of planning.
Yeah.
They got very, very stringent. Even though we're extended. So we would love to.
Yeah, if they did that themselves then.
When we went through subdivision, we had to show concept plans, which we did for this site with that future anticipated technology lab. And we're required to come back and show potential future development for the rest of the land, just in case. So there were eyes on this from April through about August last year with the. So once again, just so we're clear. Well.
I think they're saying.
So the material they have, I think, it's not what we're asking them to submit, is what they're, what we're asking them to submit is what they've shown us up here on the board. Which has got, it's got the extent, essentially where they're trying to clear in the land. I, I don't want to come here in two weeks and then everybody say, well, you should have had all this, right? We want, but that's, but that's what I think we're trying to define with the lens in which we're looking at, looking at that information, right? So, question that we've been debating round and round here is, are we doing a full site plan review just to get to the tree clearing? Or are we taking this information and saying, we understand what the long-term goal is, are we okay clearing this space? So that they can start construction at some point in this, in summer. Otherwise, we, we miss a window, I said, we, they miss a window and now aren't able to do anything until November. So, that's, I think we're trying to separate the two issues, we're trying to look at the big plan and yes, we've got parking issues to deal with, we've got a full site plan review to look at. We've got all the traffic study and EAF and all that stuff that we have to do is our due diligence as part of this review. But can we, can we look at this on a short term to get them a tree clearing permit? So that they can get themselves ready to do work, otherwise we're, we're not looking to do anything until November.
Okay, so we need Mark to look at it, he's got more to look at than he needs to advise us if we can go ahead with clearing.
I would believe so, yes.
They need to clear it by March thirty first.
And, and advise us, after having reviewed the totality of the whole project. I mean, it, it has always taken him many, many iterations, like there's back and forth, back and forth, that shouldn't happen every project.
Right.
And that's gonna take a while.
Absolutely.
So, but in this first pass, he's gonna come back with a list of comments and said, I don't understand, this is unclear, you need to resolve this, you need to go to, whatever it may say, right? But at the, usually at the bottom of it, there's, there, we, we can draw a conclusion that we're on the right track, this project is favorable. And to me, that's what I'm looking for, is this first round of reviews, right?
Wow, that's a lot, it's a big project and talking about him doing that. And, like, he'll get plans tomorrow, but he's gotta turn them around and get back here in a week.
So maybe it's high level conceptual review, not. And, and not, he's not doing a full depth, in-depth.
Well, if, if you made it clear to him, then I'm sure that we can, that it's just for the site clearing and not the rest of the project. And that they're looking to do this because of the March thirty first date, maybe he will do a high level con- conceptual review for site clearing. But I think he was the one who told Doug that he didn't want to approve it without an approved site plan.
Well, he didn't, they didn't talk to him.
Yeah, I talked to Jamie and I talked to Nick.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, that's what we sent.
So again, it's a simplify, we're going for clearance.
Correct.
Okay, he's got more than he needs for a clearance. So he's gotta take a look and get a speech with any big problems. This is, this is my thing, excuse me, this is what I'm writing to Mark, literally writing him an email, seeing if he makes it in the morning, making it right early. And he'll go right back to that after he sees one. The old covers over my head. For planning board request tonight, tomorrow you're going to get a package of site plan and engineering documents where intended only per request for a clearing permit pursuant to one ninety-two dash one oh seven C four. The board wants your comments under the request for clearing only. Is supposed to come in tomorrow per board request, the board wants your recommendation from an engineering standpoint. They have the India, and that bad issue we need to clear by March thirty first, let me know if that's an issue.
Yeah, I think, I think just. Yeah.
Finish clearing by March.
I mean, I, I'm reading here and says, in any district, on site plan review by the planning board. Pursuant maybe obtained development, excavate, deposit, create or remove tops. That's what, that's how we, bad deposit remover grade.
And, and we're not looking to do any of that, we're just looking to.
On site plan review by the planning, right?
Yeah, but they're not looking to grade, they're looking to clear trees.
Basically, we said we needed a site plan, that's what we told the opportunity yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that, um.
Well, let's stay back.
Cause we do have the one ninety-two dash seven.
Are, are we done with this topic?
I, I would like to say yes, but, so I think.
I, I think what we're doing is we are throwing it into my stance. Exactly.
Then, then, then we have another conversation.
Right, we're gonna have more discussion on this with the whole site plan review application. And I think if we look at it on a high level, the way that we need to clear the land in order to make the rest of the site plan review application work, is Mark comfortable with what's in front of him? If he's comfortable with what's in front of him.
Then it's fine if he's not.
With the rest of the reviews going forward.
Right, so we can't go any further until he takes a look at it and he's comfortable with it.
So I think that's, that's where we are at this point is, if Mark can do it, and this is an if, this is up to Mark, if he can get it done in two weeks. Otherwise, it's the first part of March, you're gonna have to work within that. If we can do it in two weeks, we will look to, to approve a clearing permit pursuant to the engineer for both of all of us. That is separate from the site plan, you only can get that material in for the whole site plan review and there is that track system in there, all the deadlines will be used.
Your submission will review the law. Who, who should be the recipient?
Planning and zoning department.
And, and directly to you or just all?
Planning and zoning department.
Yeah, and, and obviously this will be a lot of submissions.
Uh, they don't take, they don't accept them electronically, they have to be on a jump drive and two hard copies of everything.
Jump save.
Yeah. Because they, because what happens is when they come in like, well, when they come in electronically, a lot of times when they download, either they don't download or they get.
So was, uh, jump driving, how would it happen?
Two.
Physically delivered.
To the, to the. I guess you have to basically, like, it's right after.
Failing why they want to get here.
I, I, I didn't know, the next question was, do you want one physically delivered to Mark's office or to your office?
No, the electronics will get it downloaded and delivered. No, the electronics will get it, they'll deliver it in the delivery companies.
Well.
He likes the best.
That's right.
Right, that's, right. So you can call the office in the morning, they know the procedures better than anyone else. Yes, it's three one five to four four six, three nine one zero. I'm not sure what extension.
Well, we.
Three nine.
They know, they know their lot, right? The, the staff in there, that, and they're a lot better.
You are, that's all we ask.
They'll work with you, they'll work, I will promise right now, we'll just, we'll do what we can.
We have a question, where, where are you clearing again?
So this is the corner of the bone and joint, it basically is a clearing limit. And, and there are some areas in here that are already clear within, within the project limits. I mean, there's a signature oak tree, things like that. But, uh, you know, the extent towards Fly Road is essentially those limit.
You're not touching the other.
No, everything up here is all gonna remain, this is all gonna remain completely forested wood.
Repose buildings, I can't.
Yeah.
Well, we.
And the parking.
So did you say signature?
Correct, everything inside here.
It's the whole development.
Yeah. But not the whole property.
Not the whole property, I understand.
There's a pretty significant buffer of woods and stuff.
Where is the oak tree?
That big signature oak tree is down here.
That's in the.
There's actually a patio down there and stuff. So, you know, as part of the site plan, you know, we're putting in trail systems down to that oak tree, trail systems around the pond, you know, things like that to be in voice and have a.
It's just so hard to see up there.
I understand.
Like, it would be good to see that you were salvaging the, the big trees and.
Okay.
Like, you know, I think we haven't seen it.
A, as we submit, you know, when you get to full site point, you'll see that, we're protecting the tree, you can see all the trails, you can see the clearly defined. Uh, understood, I just, at this point, we had to submit it.
We all clear where we're going right now? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, clear? No, you gotta get to the office.
Sure.
Yes, you do. Okay, we'll do what we can, we'll try and get something more, try and work.
Do you have any interest in seeing the building? I know we have the architects, I don't know.
Let's get the tree there.
I didn't know, I didn't want to settle that over it.
Give the full submission so we can start looking at it, because otherwise you're gonna come to the next meeting. Well, unless you're making that many changes before your next meeting, because we would need these drawings by two weeks from now to have you come to the.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. There's only been, there's been a couple of things like on the, some of the EAF stuff that we're filling in. So we're, we're pretty much.
No, no, we have to rush next meeting.
We did. We screened the. It's the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Please.
Would you put it to adjourn?
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, everyone.